It is Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. I call this meeting to order roll call.
Here.
Here.
Here? Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. Making any changes to the agenda tonight? Next item is the approval of the consent agenda, the minutes of regular meeting of October 8th, 2024, approval of bill listed October 18th, 2024, and payable ledger dated October 18th, 2024. Excuse the absence for Councilmember Hendricks for the regular council meeting on October 8th, 2024. Consideration of ordinance number 924, series of 2024, the first hearing to set the pub- or first reading to set the public hearing of an ordinance amending the town of Dillon's schedule of fees set forth in Appendix 19A to Chapter 19, updating references to such fees elsewhere in the Dillon Municipal Code. 3.5, consideration of resolution number 5624, series of 2024, resolution approving consulting agreement with elevation to holiday lighting for services in connection with winter animation. And 3.6, consideration of resolution number 5824, series of 2024, a resolution by the Town Council of the Town of Dillon, Colorado, adopting the three-mile plan for the town of- Any discussion?
Address the email from Nathan Earth this afternoon about- Written. The written.
Minutes.
Yeah, asking for the written minutes to be included in the-
This is the time.
Okay. Do you all have a chance to read that? I don't think.
So in case you-
You want to clarify?
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, sure. Evidently in the recording from last, uh, meeting, which I was not at, but, uh, there was a part of the meeting that, um, did not come. And, uh, someone from the public, uh, asked if a written, um, document of it could be put into the-
Minutes.
Thank you.
So if you didn't have a chance to go through the notes that were sent over through the email this afternoon, basically what it comes down to is, um, the comments that Councilmember Woods made, um, regarding the condo association and in the minute, the original comment isn't recorded, but then later in Councilmember comments, the redaction of the comment is recorded. And so the email says that there should be an amendment to the first part of the minutes to say where Councilmember Woods stated the comment about the Dillon Bay condominiums. And then and then in section 10, when he addresses it, when he makes a comment that in fact he said, "I want to amend my earlier comment rather than how it's presented of just Councilmember Woods' comment." I don't have it exact.
I'd like to hear from our attorney because I, I, I don't think-
It's really your choice. I mean, the, I've seen the letter. The solicitation was for, as represented, that the minutes be amended. It's your decision whether you agree with the reason given for doing that and whether you indeed want to make a motion to either add the, um, the earlier portion of the minutes or delete the latter portion or not do anything. It's all, it's all up to you. It's a choice. It's not, there's not really a legal aspect of it.
So I think where we are at is if we want to have more discussion about it, we should pull the minutes from the consent agenda, prove the consent agenda, and then have a conversation about the minutes. Is that correct, Jeff? Or yes, okay. Anyone can make a motion and anything or any item can be pulled? And, okay. So let's do that. Let's pull the minutes.
Well, let's see if everybody wants.
Is there a motion and roll call on pulling, on pulling an item from the consent agenda? Councilmember Hendricks, are you requesting that this item be pulled?
But he wasn't at the meeting, so is that?
Okay.
I would just like to talk about it.
Let's pull the minutes 3.1 off the consent agenda. And then, so then they go right after the consent agenda? Or do they go somewhere else? Do they go at the end of the meeting? The dice and put it at that number on the agenda?
Mr. Wilson, please turn your microphone, too.
He can control his microphone and we can't.
Trying to walk and shoot down over here.
Okay. Okay, so any other concerns about the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, having removed item 3.1. Is there a motion?
Someone?
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Tyne?
Yes.
Luck?
Yeah.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Imamura?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Madam Scivera?
Yes. Up next is citizen comments. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to five minutes. You're put on notice. This may be the last meeting. We allow five-minute comments. And we are considering three moving forward. Council will take comments into consideration but will not make decisions at this time. Council will not engage in back-and-forth dialogue but may respond to a speaker with brief factual information or refer the speaker to the town manager to arrange a meeting with an appropriate staff member for discussion of the speaker's topic at an appropriate time. However, the council has no obligation to engage with the speaker by either of the foregoing methods or at all. Um, up first on our sign-in sheet, all know the drill. If you didn't sign in, you'll have another opportunity to do so, but I'll start with the sheet. Barb Richard, if you would, please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and then I'll start your five-minute timer. We're having a pathway issue tonight getting through.
Um, okay, Barb Richard, 152 Tenderfoot Street, Dillon, Colorado. Um, of course. Um, I just wanted to thank you for pulling those minutes so you guys can discuss it. That's kind of what I wanted to mention tonight is I know, um, that some of you may think it's kind of a tempest in the teapot, but it really is a slightly bigger issue of trust and transparency. Um, going door-to-door, talking to voters during the referendum, I found that trust and transparency is a major issue on the community's minds. Um, I've, in fact, I've never heard so many people this concerned about what is happening with the town. Uh, I just wanted to mention that. The one other thing I wanted to mention was about transparency. Um, I, I contacted John Henderson, who is an attorney who does, um, uh, uh, he works as a, or he's a member of the Coloradans for Metro District Reform. What he does is analysis of metro districts. And I asked him to, if he would please do an analysis for us of our metro district that was formed in 2023. Um, he is still working on that report, but there were a couple of things that he came up with immediately that kind of jumped out at me that I was very shocked by. So I just wanted to relay that to you, and I, I don't know if the council knows, um, about the first canvas board, uh, election that they have to do in May of 2023, once the metro district is formed. But at that just, at that meeting where they elect the Board of Directors, they also approved for residents and businesses of the district 1.28 billion, and yes, that is a B, billion in debt, with a repayment cost authorization, how much they can pay in principal and interest, and they approved up to 18% each year of interest of up to $10.496 billion. So these are extraordinary financial numbers for the Dillon community that has a, currently has a $29 million 2024 budget and a land area, according to Google, of 1.5 square miles. So when we talk about trust and transparency, I just want to say that there are many things going on in the town right now, and there is a reason, a deep reason why people are concerned. Thank you.
Yeah. Our next signup was actually one from online. Sue Gannett, Gannett, are you online? You are the next signup. So if you would, state your name and address for the record, and then I'll start your five-minute timer. Is she able to unmute herself? Can we unmute her?
Do it for her, but Sue, could you please unmute yourself? Sue, we still can't hear you. There should be a button in the lower corner of your screen or in the upper corner of your screen that says mic. And if you hit that mic symbol, that will be how you unmute.
Well, I'll tell you what, you work on that, and you will be up next. Um, the next person on our list is Laura Johnson. If you would, state your name and address for the record, then I'll start your five-minute timer.
First, I want to make sure that I'm going to be recorded. Okay. My name is Laura Johnson. I reside at 334A Ensign Drive in Dillon, Colorado. As much as I appreciate the time and effort put in by council members across all our communities, unfortunately, tonight, I need to read into the record an affidavit that is being signed and notarized and must be recorded as a part of the public record of tonight's meeting without being edited or modified. I, Laura Johnson, state that the town of Dillon, Colorado's minutes of the regular meeting of October 8th, 2024, Section 7 and Section 10 should be amended to include the following statements highlighted in yellow by Town Councilmember John Woods. And I'm just going to read highlighted in yellow. In Section 7, at approximately 3425 in the meeting, Councilmember John Woods discussed with Scott O'Brien, the sewage system at Dillon Bay condos. Scott O'Brien said this issue was internal to Dillon Bay and not the town of Dillon's problem. John Woods then stated that Dillon Bay's insurance has gone through the roof because of their back sewer backing up several times. Scott O'Brien discussed the INI issues when the lake is low. By consensus of the people present at the meeting in the audience, because at some point in this meeting, the audio for the recording was muted for these statements, John Woods then stated that no one should buy a condo in Dillon Bay. I would never buy there. Dillon Bay is the worst place in Summit County. Then John Woods asked, "Is that on the record?" Sorry. And Mariska Wawa said, "Yes, that is definitely on the record." And then in Section 10, we need to amend John Woods's statement saying that John Woods stated that he wants to amend his earlier comments about Dillon Bay not being a good place to live. And just in case you're wondering, that is on audio. Unfortunately, what we have seen in the town of Dillon is that a simple act of record-keeping is being abused. And this is a criminal action, a class-two misdemeanor punishable by jail time and fines. In Colorado, abuse of public records occurs when someone knowingly falsifies or makes a false entry in public records, knowingly destroys, mutilates, removes, conceals, or impairs the availability of a public record without authority, and knowingly alters a public record without authority from the custodian. The public record of the October 8th Town Council meeting has been altered, and by whom, I do not know. The written minutes in the consent packet deliberately leave out statements made by Councilmember John Woods and deliberately misrepresent what John Woods did indeed say. Unfortunately, we do not know how this was done, but statements by John Woods about Dillon Bay condos have been muted on the Microsoft Teams meeting. No one should be using our town and its public records to further their own personal vendettas, personal goals, personal gains, and personal desires. Honestly, I cannot even believe what I have seen transpire within this town since I became involved in June. No one should be having to babysit either the Town Council or the town staff. People should not be having to come to these meetings and taking notes on their own because they can't trust the public record to be accurate, just like what happened with John Woods' statements about the Dillon Bay condos. No one should have to stand in this room and speak loudly like citizens did at the special meeting on September 16th, simply because Town Council doesn't want to hear what has been misrepresented to the community by the proposed developer, by the town staff, and by the Town Council. I should not have been the one to have to present that under the existing zoning, Best Western is four separate parcels and no one big ugly belt. Furthermore, I should not have had to argue with Town Council members to even get them to acknowledge or listen to this. I want you to know that I have not enjoyed trying to get corrected the altered and incorrect record of John Woods' statements about Dillon Bay. It has been extremely unpleasant for me, and it has taken way too much of my time. And I should not be forced into this because of the Town of Dillon Council's behavior. I should not be doing your homework, and you, as Town Council members, should not be throwing me or any of your other citizens, your town staff, or other council members under the bus.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Sue, it sounds like you got going online there.
Yes, can you hear me?
If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and I'll start your five-minute timer.
My name is Sue Gannett. I live at 72 Corinthian Hill Circle in the Dillon Bay condos. I am the Dillon Bay President, HOA President, and I'm here to address the disparaging remarks made by Councilmember John Woods at the October 8th meeting. Apparently, his comments are not on the recording due to a audio glitch. Um, but I have confirmed from various people who were there, including the town manager, that he did insane, um, all the disparaging comments he made, um, concerning Dillon Bay. Um, no one should buy a condo in Dillon Bay. It's the worst place to live in Summit County. Their insurance is through the roof. The sewer is backing up. Mr. Co-, Mr. Woods' comments are not only false, but extremely deflamatory, malicious, and slanderous. Mr. Woods' comments that Dillon Bay is suffering from a sewer problems are false. Our insurance has gone up, just like everybody else's has, but we have managed to find a policy for a $100,000 premium, which is one of the lowest for condominium complexes in Summit County. That is the first, uh, falsehood he had mentioned. Owners, the other is owners, Dillon Bay owners are members of the Corinthian Hill HOA, along with Mr. Woods, who resides in Corinthian Hill. We find it unconscionable that Mr. Woods would make such disparaging, false comments about his fellow Corinthian Hill HOA members. I also spoke to a Dillon Bay owner who is extremely upset after hearing and shocked the comments Mr. Woods said. They are currently selling their unit and feel that his comments from a Town Council member that represent, supposed to represent us, is a, not a selling point when they're trying to sell their unit. I have, uh, I all, although he corrected his statements at the end of the meeting, the damage has been done. It is out there. Unfortunately, this is not the first time we have dealt with Mr. Woods at Dillon Bay. Prior to the vote for the development, Mr. Woods obtained Dillon Bay owners' private emails and emailed them and stated that he was for the development and that Dillon, um, the town is in financial, going to be in financial ruin, so they should vote for this development. This is totally, um, I don't even know, there are no words for it. I have had so many owners, and we have 45 units, that are like, "What is this guy doing with our private emails?" That was the first thing we dealt with, with Mr. Woods. This appears to be a retaliation for talking to him about, "You can't do this. If you're going to, you can't solicit, get private emails and solicit people." Because this isn't the first time we've dealt with him, we are requesting, first of all, to correct the record to show the statements he made that night. It's the least this council can do. I mean, you're, they're supposed to be representing the Dillon community. We, I have 45 owners that don't think Mr. Woods represents any of them, especially with his statements. And even more concerning for some owners is, we, he's our neighbor. This is not the behavior we expect from a councilperson or anybody in his situation. I would mention that his behavior is not only totally inappropriate, it also demonstrates that he is not suitable to hold public office. If he is going to retaliate against a condominium complex that is part of his own condominium complex. We are requesting, the Dillon Bay community is requesting the council, take disciplinary action and remove Mr. Woods from the council. We hope you will consider this request, and we hate to go there.
Sue, your five-minute timers up. Thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you would, just re-mute yourself. Oh, oh, yeah, yep. Um, and is anyone else here tonight to make a public comment? That didn't sign up. If you would, please, up at the lectern, you can state your name and address for the record, and then I'll start your five-minute timer.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Bouchard, homeowner of 135 Main Street, uh, La Riva del Lago, Unit 211. Also, the acting, uh, Board President of the Homeowners Association of La Riva del Lago. Uh, the HOA governs, uh, not only the 37 residential homeowners above the commercial space, but the commercial space, uh, and its tenants downstairs. Um, here to speak, uh, to the Section 5 this evening, the ordinance and the approval of the PUD sign plan for La Riva del Lago. Uh, I just want, uh, to certainly, uh, represent the homeowners upstairs. This is a large sign package. We, it's a mixed-use building that, uh, takes, you know, both commercial and residential ownership and to work together in partnership to succeed. We want to see the commercial development continue to grow, and we want to see the residents' privacies protected. So, uh, you know, in support of this, uh, request, you know, just that, the illumination of lights, just that, that there are actions, uh, by the commercial owner and the architect that take into account the residential needs while they're, uh, pursuing, uh, the signage approval. Um, specifically on the north elevation, there is a, what I believe to be a location designated for the sign at, at, at the entranceway in, into the commercial property from the north, where a nice, great, big, mature tree stands that provides some privacy, uh, full transparency. It, that tree sits above my balcony, Unit 211, as well as Unit 212. But it's a great tree, uh, and, and if there is another potential location for that sign where we don't have to take down, uh, some landscape, uh, that, that would be appreciated. Um, so, uh, thank, thank you for the moment that I had. I wanted to, uh, share, uh, that, that, that it's a, it's an interesting, it's a mixed-use, it's a wonderful building, and we want to see, uh, these, these, um, uh, tenant improvements or commercial improvements take place, but we just want to make sure that we do it in partnership, both commercial and residential, and, and that the residential, uh, concerns can, can be heard in approving that plan. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe that was public comment. That was a comment on Agenda Number 5. Is that right?
Yes.
That's correct.
And so that should be made part of the public hearing on that agenda. When we get to it.
You should have said that right at the beginning when he was like, "I'm going to talk about the sign plan." Um, how do I do that? Do I just say that? Let's, please add that comment into the public hearing for Item 5. And I should have stopped you and said, "We're about to have a public hearing about that, so we'll do it then," but I wasn't looking ahead in the agenda. My bad. Um, anyone else here to make a public comment tonight? Linda, if you would, please, um, up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and I'll start your five-minute timer.
Hi, my name is Linda Oliver. I live at 606 Tenderfoot, Dillon. I just would like to be on record that I believe 100%, 1,000% with what Barb Richard had read earlier today, and also Laura Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight to make a public record? Shannon, if you would, make your way up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and I'll start your five-minute timer.
Okay, my name is Shannon White. I live at, well, just moved, so 212 Tenderfoot. Um, in Dillon, I was at the last public meeting, so I did hear the comments in person. Um, and I'm just going to read, I guess, what I wrote. During the October 8th, 2024, Dallin Town Council regular meeting, Councilmember John Woods publicly, clearly, and on the record stated that no one should buy in Dillon Bay and that Dillon Bay condos are the worst. In watching the council meeting recording posted by the Town of Dillon, Councilman, Councilman Woods' negative and detrimental comments were muted. This concerns me greatly as the official record does not accurately represent what was said in an open, public meeting. Transparency in our local government are, is of utmost importance. Councilmembers publicly, it, Councilmember Woods publicly and on the record degraded a neighborhood in the town of Dillon in a room full of people in his official capacity as a town official. For whatever reason, his negative comments have been omitted from the public record. And I request that before council approves the meeting minutes from the October 8th, 2024 council meeting, that the minutes and the written transcript of the meeting are amended, amended to accurately include the meeting and all comments made on the record by Councilman Woods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to make a public comment tonight? Anyone else here to make a public comment tonight? Thank you, everyone. Um, close citizen comments. Up next, we have item five, consideration of ordinance number eight, twenty-four, series of twenty twenty-four. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving a level four. Oh, thanks. Development. Application for a PUD sign plan for the La Riva Del Lago building. Um, it is seven thirty and I'll open the public hearing. Ned.
Good evening. Um, thank you, mayor and council. Uh, I, I believe that the applicant is not present. I will be happy to present, uh, the application as thoroughly as possible. Um, and I would also welcome, uh, public comment again, if, if someone would like to, to restate their feelings or, or express additional ones, um, as this is a public hearing. Uh, this pertains to the building, um, the La Riva Del Lago, um, mixed-use building. It's both commercial and residential, uh, located at one three-five Main Street in the core area of Dillon. Um, as you may recall, uh, back towards the end of, of May of two thousand twenty-four, the town council did review a, in, an encroachment license agreement, um, for some proposed, uh, freestanding signs that will encroach upon, uh, uh, the main street right of way, as well as some commercial decks also to encroach into portions of the main street right of way. Uh, that encroachment license agreement was approved by the town council. Uh, th- this, uh, hearing tonight relates to those signs, those freestanding signs that would overhang into the main street right of way. Um, it also pertains to building signs as part of the entire, um, PUD sign plan package. Uh, we've been working on this for a little bit. Um, it, it took a while to get through even the encroachment license. Uh, we did hear this, uh, before the, the planning and zoning commission back in July. Uh, we did have public comments at that time and it was ultimately approved and recommended for approval by the planning commission. So they do make their recommendation through, uh, resolution PZ zero two dash twenty-four, series of twenty twenty-four. So that, that record is on file and that recommendation, um, comes with, uh, tonight's staff summary. As within the record, uh, the, the sign plan, uh, essentially modernizes, uh, the signage for the building. Uh, it includes new building signage, essentially in the same sign band locations as the current signage is on the building. Um, it does provide for some new design standards for all of the signage to create a unified appearance. Uh, the signage is proposed to have halo lighting, so that is essentially backlit, um, letters, um, that, that the light kind of shines out around. And to describe that better, I kind of would point you to Homewood Suites and those metal signs up high on that building, um, the metal signs that say Homewood Suites, they have this halo lighting and that's where the, the LEDs are attached basically to the back of these metal letters and the light shines out kind of around the letters. So not very bright i- if, if you, um, take a look in the evening, it's, it's just kind of creates this halo appearance. Um, so that's what's proposed for the building signage and the freestanding signage. Uh, the freestanding signage, uh, is up to, uh, twenty-two feet in height and I will note that that is substantially why we are here tonight, um, uh, reviewing this under a PUD approval and that's a planned unit development. We do have a special classification for sign plans that are approved through a PUD process. Essentially, that PUD or planned unit development has special design criteria that may deviate somewhat from the code. So with these freestanding signs being twenty-two feet tall, that does deviate from the standard provisions of the code, which actually in the core area of town in general would limit, um, freestanding signs to actually six feet in height. Um, properties within twenty feet of Lake Dillon Drive, there is a, a code provision there where those signs could be fifteen feet tall. So there was an accounting for, oh, let's, let's allow for a little more vibrancy, a little bit more recognizability on what we consider our main street, Lake Dillon Drive. The applicant in this case is trying to draw people to his commercial building. Um, as you're aware, it has a mix of tenants. He has some vacancy. He is trying to fill. Um, and he has some nightlife there that he would really like to draw, um, good, positive attention to, um, to, to have more vibrant business and activity in the building. So that's, um, why the taller signs, he's really hoping that through some subtle lighting in those signs, that he can draw some attention, uh, from different parts of the, the town center and, and potentially even all the way down Main Street. Um, so let's see. Touch on a few of the, the kind of technical aspects of the signage. Uh, per the code, um, they could have, uh, well over nine hundred square feet of signage, um, based on eighteen square feet per tenant. And given the number of tenants in the building, it could get up to upwards of that. Um, and that's detailed in a, um, in a table on, uh, sheet A five in, in the, there it is, right there. Um, and so, yeah, they, they could have upwards of, uh, nine hundred and seventy-two, uh, square feet of building signage and another, uh, fifty square feet of, of the freestanding signage. And what they're proposing is, um, substantially less than that. They're coming in around, um, two hundred and sixty or two hundred and twenty, excuse me, square feet. Age is not treating me well. I need better readers. Um, so, uh, based on that, you know, it's, it's well within the, the standards of the code. It's really that freestanding sign height, uh, where we're really getting into this PUD realm. And it's also that, um, fact that it's encroaching into the right of way. So there is a code provision that signage must be entirely on site and that's another reason for us to be visiting this through a PUD, um, process. Uh, finally, I, I did, uh, find a, a slight error in, in the ordinance. So I wanted to highlight that to you and I am requesting a, a, uh, technical amendment to one of the, um, recitals. It would be recital number five. Recitals are those whereas's in the ordinance. So they just kind of spell out some of the facts as we're getting into the ordinance. And it's, uh, the fifth one down or the third one up, and it's the one that has October eighth. And it's actually, today is the twenty-second. Um, so that is the error there. It's, uh, just changing the date from October eighth to October twenty-second. And I do apologize for that typographical error. Um, other than that, uh, town staff does recommend approval of ordinance, uh, zero eight dash twenty-four, series of twenty twenty-four. And again, this is a public hearing, so, um, public comments are welcome.
Like that applicant and staff presentation in one. Efficient.
Okay, uh, perhaps not under all situations.
Um, questions or comments or questions at this point in the hearing for Ned?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So we'll go, I'll, since I don't hear any comments from, or questions from council right now, I'll open it up for the public hearing and the public can do their part of the hearing now. Um, and so you can go. And you can feel free to, like, state your questions in your comment and then Ned will hopefully be able to address them.
Uh, first, again, thank you for the opportunity, Ned. Thank you for speaking to the lighting concerns of the residents and the halo effect of the signs. I think that'll bring people some of a comfort. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that. Uh, the two freestanding signs on the main street are right in front of the storefront, uh, on the cement, on the concrete itself. Uh, and, and, and again, I don't think I did a, a good enough job in my earlier comments, but, uh, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the building as a whole to certainly improve its appearance. Uh, so I personally, as a resident, are in support of, of the signage package. On the Buffalo Street, freestanding sign, however, because this could get approved and, and that sign can go where, where it's being requested to be approved. There is a tree there, or so I, I believe. Would there be the opportunity for the architect and the commercial owner to, if in fact that there is a, a very mature, large tree there, would there be consideration to maybe relocate the sign on the Buffalo Street side?
Yeah, we can, we can ask all that and talk about that. Thanks.
Thank, thank you again for the opportunity.
For the record, that was Jonathan Borgias. Is that right?
You're not the first person to butcher that.
I guarantee, try saying my name.
Jonathan Bouchoir.
Thanks.
Thank, 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 thank you again.
Thanks. Okay, so, um, council, any questions? Or is there anybody else here to make a public comment on this public hearing? Counsel, any questions for Ned? I do have a question, Ned. Were you teeing one up or? It's Beth. I think they came together. Do you have a separate comment? Okay, yeah, yeah, no problem. It's okay. You're doing great. You guys are doing, you're just hitting it out of the park right now, so. Um, so I think what we're talking about, this is the north elevation right here. Just to the right of the staircase, is that the sign that maybe the tree is? I didn't see anything in the actual contents of the ordinance about preservation of trees. Are all those trees in the right-of-way that we're giving an easement on or are they on private property?
Uh, thank you for the question. On the Buffalo Street side, um, the, the property line goes almost to the sidewalk on Buffalo. And so those are private landscape improvements. So considering that a landscape plan was approved for the, the development of La Riva or the redevelopment of it, um, when the condominiums were added on top, uh, there was a landscape plan, so the expectation is that landscaping would be preserved and if not preserved, then replaced. So at, at the very least, we would be seeking a new tree, but that doesn't get a mature tree. So, um, certainly the, the ordinance could be amended to add an additional condition of approval, um, that, um, that the location of the Buffalo Street freestanding sign needs to be coordinated with, uh, town staff and, and representative of the, the residential HOA, something along those lines. Um, and I think that might, might get us there. If, if that's the will of the council.
Great. Thank you, Ned.
Sure.
Set your hand up or?
I have a question, I guess.
Yep.
You said, you say the lighting is like, uh, Homewood Suites, that's haloed around. Um, really the lighting on Homewood Suites works because it's draining off the building, right? And the light's coming back around. So how's that working on these signs? How's the, is there? Is, is there something on the back of the letters to cause the light to come back around?
Yes, th- thank you, Kyle. There is, on the building signs, there's actually a background board, if you will, um, that, um, would be that backing of the letters. So there'll be an actual offset of color so that during the daytime, you can see them when they aren't illuminated. Um, so that's the intent there and also the, those freestanding sign panels hanging from that, um, building directory sign. Um, those also have individual sign panel boards, if you will, um, with an, an offsetting color, um, for daytime viewing. So at night, that, that halo would still work where the light would come out around those, uh, laser cut steel letters, as I understand they are.
Their illumination restriction for, for those to be on town?
Uh, the, the code has a general provision about sign lighting. That's that it cannot be any brighter than, um, the kind of surrounding lighting, I think is actually the, the wording in the code. So there is, and, um, that can certainly be evaluated, um, upon installation.
Um, I didn't see the, in here that sort of, um, ties them to this sign sort of upkeep forever. So is it worth putting a condition in that something like, you know, if you get a new business, you need to update your signs within a certain amount of time or get some new signs right away or what's appropriate for a temporary sign?
I, I appreciate that. All of those criteria are spelled out in the code separately. So we did not feel that they were required to be part of this ordinance. Uh, but there are provisions to remove signs, um, shortly after a business closes and other permitting requirements.
Other businesses around town have freestanding signs that are lit up at nighttime?
Uh, the answer to that question is relatively, um, s- simple in that the fact of, of the core area, how property lines are laid out. In general, most buildings, the property lines go right to the eve of, of the drip line of, of the roof. Um, in this case, La Riva Del Lago has that bit of land on the, the Buffalo side, um, which includes where their trash enclosure is. Um, they have an enclosure for their transformer. Um, and then they have some landscaping along that north side of the building, along Buffalo. So in, in the case of this building, it's actually rather unique. Um, we do have, eh, some freestanding signs. Um, uh, the, the post office comes to mind. Uh, there's freestanding sign in the, the four, um, lot complex, catty corner across from town hall here. Um, and Sail Loft has a freestanding sign. So those are some that come to mind.
Pug Ryan's sign.
And Pug Ryan's has a sizable sign.
They're not, they're not like li- lit letters, but they're lit by a light, all those signs. Was that your question or was it the freestanding? It's a, a two-part question.
Sorry, I guess it was more in this style. Like the other businesses in the town court? That they don't seem to have signs.
I don't think we've allowed it, have we? And then we had that conversation about would this be allowable and is it something we're interested in? They have to go office at a certain time. Remember we had, I, it's not tonight, obviously, but we had a discussion about allowing lighted signs. Is that right? I know that's right. I remember.
Illuminated signs are permitted in the core area generally in the code. Um, internal illumination is something that's specifically, um, called out as not permitted, um, under general zoning provisions in the, in the town center. And it's also the residential area. Um, it's, uh, the sign zones are broken up into sign zone A and sign zone B. They do not comport with, uh, our zoning, um, land use zones. Um, it's, it's, these are individual sign zones. And so the town center and our residential areas are sign zone A, much more stringent generally, um, sign requirements and then sign zone B is more of our, um, highway six corridor, um, where we have more of our commercial business. I don't know the reasoning why the town center typically has more stringent, um, sign code provisions. It is actually somewhat limiting for the vibrancy and, um, um, advertising that businesses seek to, to have, um, vivacious business. So, um, that's just how it was done. Um, these codes were adopted in, in ninety-six and they've slowly been amended, but much of it remains.
So what was the issue? Uh, you, you was concerned about Lodge Bowl or Buffalo Street, excuse me? The location of a tree.
Yeah, the tree and, and I think the lighting. And I, maybe the, the lighting concern has been addressed and, and to, um, to Kyle's point, we can, we can take a look at that, um, and see if there is an issue after they're, they are installed and compare it to surrounding lighting. Um, but it, it's that tree. So, um, if there's a desire to amend, um, the ordinance in addition to my technical amendment that I'm requesting for that, that fifth recital, then, uh, please feel free to do so.
Then it can be removed, right? Or he can remove it or the owner removes it or, but it has to be replaced? Is that what?
Uh, that's correct. That is what I was insinuating. Um, that development was approved with a landscape plan and per code, um, landscapes, um, approved as part of a development need to be maintained and if they die, then they should be replaced.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will, um, close the public hearing at seven forty-eight. Thanks, Ned. Counsel, discussion? Into the effective to the property to keep to a tree. Yeah, so I think that would be an appropriate amendment. We could add it on to exhibit B. It would be the sixth condition of approval. We, you know, request that, uh, the applicant coordinate the exact location with staff to preserve existing landscape.
I would support that.
Is, I see some nods for general support of that. Okay, so I'll try to tee this up in the, in the motion. Any other discussion items here? Okay, I would entertain a motion that approves ordinance number eight twenty-four, a series of twenty twenty-four, amending recital number five to record today's date rather than October eighth and to add a sixth condition of. and to add a sixth condition of approval that the applicant coordinate the exact location of the sign with staff in an attempt to preserve existing landscaping.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Counsel, any further discussion? Jeff, does that meet? Great. Roll call.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Luck?
Yes.
Imamura?
Yes.
Tyne?
Yes.
Madam Scivera?
Yes. Great. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for participating. Up next, item six, consideration of resolution number 5924, a series of 2024 Resolution of the Town of Dillon, Colorado to approve an agreement with Summit County Government to relocate the water line located along portions of County Road 51. Scott or Ned?
Take this one.
Ned. Who wants it?
Ned's been working hard on this project, so I'll let him do it.
Thank you. As you all are aware, we have been working on this project for quite some time. This is a pretty, very small part of this complex puzzle. What we have discovered, as we've researched the existing conditions onsite, is that there is a town-owned water main which passes through the Forest Service administrative site, literally through their, their site. And to do the proposed development of six new apartment buildings, the water line needs to be relocated to accommodate three of those apartment buildings. So this is an agreement that we propose entering into with Summit County Government to kind of formalize the relocation of that, that section of water lane, water line. It is in fact a water main which conveys water actually down towards Gold Run Circle ultimately and much of, of, of this part of the town. So it's, it's a critical water main and the town, town staff does recommend entering into this agreement with Summit County. This does tie in with our will serve letter that was previously provided to the county. And it is attached as one of the exhibits to, to the documents before you tonight. And it details some of the real nitty-gritty conditions that Public Works and the utility superintendent felt were imperative, such as where valves go and things like that. We did not feel that this leg of water main really required that level of detail. The will serve letter already details a great deal and it also includes our standard construction specifications. So all of that is kind of pulled together and that this is much more related to that water main relocation.
Questions for Ned? Comments? It has to be moved. It has to be moved. So I just. I see on your, on your, on the staff summary, there's no budget impact. So that means this is something that Summit County is paying for at this point?
The project is paying for it.
Project, okay.
Yes.
Sort of rolled into Summit County's paying for it. And we are contributing in our way.
In, in our way, we're contributing the water as a part of it. We're contributing some snow removal on, on the rec path that parallels County Road 51. And we're also doing the snow removal and maintenance of County Road 51. So the town has a part in the project. Because of the pro forma of the development, it's not entirely the county paying for it. Ultimately, it's, it's the people leasing the property that help pay for the project as well as the investment that the public is making. So.
It's rolled into the cost of.
Yes.
And to Ned's point, if, if you all wanted to say pay for this and do this work yourselves, you could. So this, so the project want to bear the cost to move.
Well, let me just get my checkbook out then. I'm just kidding. I vote against that. I vote against that. Any other questions or discussion here? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 5924, a series of 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Imamura?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Luck?
Yes.
Tyne?
Yes.
Madam Scivera?
Yes. Thank you, Ned.
Thank you.
Up next is consideration of resolution number 6024, a series of 2024 Resolution of the Town of Dillon, Colorado to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Dillon and XL Energy for the implementation of the Dillon Energy Action Plan. Ned? Down, up, down, up, down. Getting it done tonight, Ned?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The most, most of the work was last week, actually. And, and the past several months, actually, as you'll recall, during our last meeting, we introduced the, the, the Energy Action Plan to you, which was a month-long project we, we worked on diligently. So this MOU and, and tonight's resolution would adopt that Energy Action Plan and also enter into an MOU with XL Energy to get into what we're calling Phase Two. It's the implementation of this Energy Action Plan where we'll do outreach to our residential population, our multifamily population, our business community. And we'll look inwardly at what we can do on the municipal level and what, what improvements we might be able to make for energy efficiency and saving money, which is really the goal of all of this, is to really save our community members' money. And so that's the hope. We can improve insulation and weather sealing and things like that by encouraging our community through this MOU as an implementation phase. I can tell you that XL is committed to this. Not only were they committed in helping us develop this Energy Action Plan, but they're committed to helping us implement it. And they are paying their consultant, the Brendel Group, to help us with this implementation to the tune of 270 hours of time. And so by entering into this, we get to utilize their support and do a lot of great work to, to help our community.
Are we also setting up a way that we can like track improvements made? So we can sort of go back and pinpoint, we did this project and we got these results out of it?
Yeah, and we have created a baseline for our community to the greatest extent possible. And that's all recorded in, in the action plan. We have some baseline data for much of the town. What is lacking is our multifamily complexes. And we just have, and XL has limited rec, limited records on, on that segment. And it's a very large segment of our residential population. But we are going to try to, and actually, we will be meeting with the various HOAs as part of this implementation to find out what kind of work they've done in the past, to try to, to try to figure out some sort of baseline and, and a, and a path forward. So yes to that. And then also for quite a number of years, we have been doing baseline energy audits on our own municipal facilities. So we have that going back for quite a number of years. So we will be able to, to look back at that data as well.
Is there a working group for the Energy Action Plan yet?
We have, we had a, a, our partners in energy, so we, we abbreviate that as PI. So our PI group is still active, that helped us implement the plan and put the plan together. Many of them are still very interested in the implementation phase. And we have, during a survey, we had a number of people that were interested in committing some time to being part of that implementation. So that, that group's actually growing. So, and we will continue to build that.
And I'm thinking about it, it's in my, the top of my head because in our rules that we were talking about, they, so one of the things we talked about is groups, different groups we can be a part of. And I know like the Breckman's Town Council, for instance, does a lot of these sort of like small scale. You know, it's not a committee that everyone's going to be on in perpetuity. But while we're doing this project, sort of assigning a council member as, as a representative or a liaison or just, you know, someone who's interested in being involved. Is that an appropriate place for a council member to sit?
Please.
Cool. I'm interested, but anyone else who's interested should also, should speak up. It sounds, it looks like you might have been interested.
In fact, two of you could without any problem be a part of it. And, and since you can easily reach out to your constituents, it would be hugely beneficial, actually.
Great. I think that would be a great place for councils to start getting these like small, smaller one-off kind of efforts where, you know, maybe this is a two-year effort where council is engaged, sort of like the zero waste thing was, you know? Even though that is ongoing.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll reach out to the two of you as we move this forward. Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 6024, a series of 2024.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Luck?
Yes.
Woods?
Yeah.
Tyne?
Yes.
Imamura?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Madam Scivera?
Yes. Great, thanks, Ned. Item eight, consideration of resolution number 6124, a series of 2024 Resolution of the Town of Dillon, Colorado to approve the Housing Helps Memorandum of Understanding with Summit County. Nathan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. After our discussion last week about our Housing 5A goals, we are bringing for you, forward to you tonight, a MOU or memorandum of understanding with Summit County Government to expand the housing helps program here in the Town of Dillon. The memorandum included in your packet for formal consideration would give 50% split between the county and 50% with the Town of Dillon. This is not only for properties located within the town limits, but also in unincorporated Snake River Basin areas. So think of Dillon Valley out towards Keystone and Summit Cove. We are pretty excited about this program and what we intend to do here is to have a link to the county's website and be a partner in their website. So all the information is on a one-stop shop, so to say. And staff is recommending approval of the MOU for you all tonight.
Questions or comments for Nathan regarding the MOU? For housing helps?
Idea of. actions in the. Yeah, we should do more of it. I think this shows that we're, we're concerned about helping people find affordable housing in this community and we're trying to help in that with that effort with this housing helps, which I've seen work in other municipalities very, quite well for people being able to get a home government helping. So I'm definitely had a lot of discussion about this last time, so I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 6124, a series of 2024. Is there a second?
Second?
I don't know. I thought you guys could both do it and then figure it out.
Which one did you get?
I got Councilmember Luck and I wasn't sure who got.
Second. We'll give Renee the second because she tried to get the first. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Imamura?
Yes.
Tyne?
Yes.
Luck?
Yes.
Madam Scivera?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Up next, we have new item nine, which is actually item 3.1 from the consent agenda, the minutes of the regular meeting of October 8th, 2024. We've had several comments about this. We received an email. So the question and discussion to be had is, do the minutes need to be amended to more accurately reflect the content of the discussion at the October 8th meeting? And if so, how?
Madam Mayor, first, it's all about me. Can I comment?
Please.
Please. So this, this issue started when we were talking about sewage. Scott was talking about sewage. And I happen to have a good friend that owns a property in Dillon Bay, who had described to me the problems that they'd been having regarding sewage backing up into the lower units. So I wasn't sure of the details and that's why I asked Scott, was he familiar with what was going on in Dillon Bay? And he was. And he said, he said it that, he answered at that time that the problem was a sewer ejector system that they have that's not part of the Dillon infrastructure. It's instead the responsibility of the Dillon Bay owners. The reason I brought this up is because it was, it's a problem that these people have. And I thought of myself as an advocate for them, thinking that can Dillon help these people who are having sewer issues in Dillon? And, and at the same time, alerting fellow council members that they do have this pretty, pretty bad problem. And that means toilets backing up into their apartments, their houses. There's nothing more nasty than that. So that's where it all came from. And then, of course, I'm not a, the extent of that problem is that if people know that this building is plagued with sewer backups, that who would, who would buy, who would buy in that building? And, and I, and by the way, I wish that the transcript script was available because these people that are apparently out for my scalp are making up words now because the actual comments aren't on the record. I never did say. What did they claim that I said? And you guys were all there too. So can anyone remember me saying that this is the worst place to buy in Summit County? Because I didn't say it. Anyone remember me saying, no one should buy there?
I do remember you saying that.
No, I said, I wouldn't buy there.
I think you said, no one should buy in Dillon Bay condominiums. This is the worst place to buy in Summit County. I do remember you saying.
He didn't say the worst place to buy.
Why would I say that?
I didn't.
Why do I say this?
He was trying to help out and.
But anyway, anyway, my, the whole thing was about problem solving. Me trying to identify a problem, seeing if there's a solution, finding out if the Town of Dillon could assist these people in curing a problem that exists. It's not something I made up. Everyone knows it's true. Scott knew it's true. So I, I'm just saying the truth. That's unfortunate. But the truth is that this building has had sewer problems described to me in detail by someone that owns in that, in that property. So, but I thought, I'm not a professional politician and sometimes I, I, I speak before, I think, which is why I said, is that on the record? I really probably shouldn't be giving any negative information to the public about a problem I know that exists in my community of Corinthian Hill. Which is why I said, I want to amend that. I want to say that John Woods thinks that Dillon Bay is a great place. It has some of the best views of the lake anywhere in Summit County. And I would recommend, if they get their sewer problems fixed, that my friends go and check it out. That's what I said. Nothing that I said was untrue, by the way. So I apologize for not being as politically astute as maybe I should be. I didn't intend any damage to the owners of Dillon Bay.
So John, what do you think is the appropriate resolution for this? Because I appreciate you explaining yourself and.
I don't care about the minutes. Minutes, I understand that the first comments weren't in the minutes. But I also understand that the minute writer doesn't write verbatim everything that we say. So how do you blame the minute writer for not saying, writing down what you hope that they wrote? That, that's just the way that it works. The minutes don't contain every, every item that someone said.
So I think one resolution that could, could check the box would be, because there is a comment in item 10 about you sort of correcting your comment. And so maybe if we could rephrase the way that says, it would more accurately express what you were trying to say. John Woods amended the comment he made earlier.
Saying that I wouldn't vote there. I wouldn't buy there. But what I would have said if I was, expressed the whole feeling, I wouldn't buy there until they get this problem that they have corrected. That's the whole reason I brought it up with Scott, to see if there was some way that the Town of Dillon could assist these people in handling their sewer problems. Because sewer problem like that for buildings is expensive. And also about the insurance rates. I mean, my friend told me the insurance rates have gone up. And why do insurance rates go up? Because people that were victimized by overflowing toilets filed claims, and then the insurance company realizes that this building has a problem, and then they drop them.
Also because property valuations are going up by, you know.
This, the owner of the building, my friend, owner of a unit in the building, was my friend, was giving this information. Thought I was giving him help.
And I, and I did say, I mean, that, that HOA is the lowest, as Suk can it, and I know her very well, was really out of any HOAs, that they do have a really good affordable HOA, and I had said that, too. But, I mean, about transparency, when that comment was made, I mean, I don't, I think there might have been a glitch in the recording. I don't think anybody did anything with the recording. And we don't have access to any of that. And I think we're all transparent here, and we all, we all say things maybe that don't mean, I think every one of us has said things that we would think, oh, my gosh, that came out wrong. And we're all human beings. And so I, I do understand, I do understand people's comments and how upset they would be based on those comments that I read in that email. I did so.
Over here, what do we think is the appropriate, excuse me, resolution to this?
Is the procedural question, do we, do we add to the minutes? Is that?
Are we going, do we need to amend the minutes before we, or not?
Well, I, I mean, I would think we should amend the minutes, right, to include what we believe, dangerous word, I suppose, what we believe was said, because we should have minutes as accurate as possible, which I think is important. I would, I would be in favor of amending the minutes, like what was actually said, as best we can reconstruct.
Okay. All right. So let's endeavor to amend the minutes here. In the email, and I'm just going to work from this, because this is what we have in front of us. There are two sections that we need to be sort of narrowing in on here. Section seven. Do we have the minutes pulled up here? Can we maybe pull them up so we can? Okay. So in section seven, the recommendation in the email is there is synopsis of what Scott says, and then in yellow, it's typed, Councilmember John Woods discussed with Scott O'Brien the sewage system. I'm not sure we need to get this granular. We could. We don't typically do exactly this. Discuss with Scott O'Brien, the sewage system at Dillon Bay condos. Scott O'Brien said that this issue is internal to Dillon Bay and not that This isn't on there, is it? This is the yellow part? It comes up brown on my phone, so it's a little harder to see. And not the Town of Dillon's problem. John Woods then stated that Dillon Bay's insurance has gone through the roof because their sewer has backed up several times. Scott O'Brien then discussed the INI issue when the lake is low. John Woods then stated, no one should buy a condo in Dillon Bay. I would never buy there. It's the worst place in Summit County. Okay. But you did say, no one should buy a condo in Dillon Bay. I would never buy there?
Said, I wouldn't leaving out the part until the sewage problem is fixed, but who, who would?
So you would say, no one should buy a place in Dillon Bay. I would never buy there until the sewage prob, I don't remember you saying that. The email that Nathan sent out, reading right here.
This Laura Johnson book.
It's, it came from Laura Johnson.
Okay.
Based on her affidavit that she had notarized, based on polling the public about what was said. So it's, well, so here, this is the yellow that's printed out. It's exactly what I was reading. This is exactly what I'm reading, what was just handed out. This is exactly the email.
I mean, I guess I'd be allowed to ask you, Jeff, for advice on this, because nobody knows for sure what was said.
Yeah.
How do we handle this?
I don't know that you can amend the minutes if you're not sure what to put in the minutes. Added to the fact that these are action minutes, so that this quote would never would have been in the minutes in the first place, because these are action minutes. Whoever said it earlier, that we don't do a verbatim transcript. So this is, this is putting in the minutes something that would not have been in there in the first place. Now, what is in the minutes is the council member comment at the end of the meeting. That, I think, could be clarified. It's already in the minutes, if it's, if it's inaccurate in any way.
So, okay. So that is also the impression I have. It's hard to put the quotes on it and any of us to say, I remember for certain, this quote is accurate. If we go to item 10, Part Two, it's right up there at the bottom. The suggestion on here, Councilmember Woods stated at 4239 that he wants to amend his earlier comment about Dillon Bay condos not being a place, a good place to live. I, I mean, I would, I would think a more general, his comment that no one should buy in Dillon Bay is what I remember.
But we can't craft something that we
I know, but I, but I don't remember him saying, this is not a good place to live. But he did say, no one should buy in Dillon Bay condos. That's what I recall. I don't remember the rest of it.
I don't recall any, yeah.
What I said is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy, I wouldn't buy in Dillon Bay condos if my toilets weren't going to back up, and neither would anyone else. That's a completely rational statement, implying that they should get this thing fixed. And then, and that's what I, when I
The only reason
Later comments, I said, I would never buy, no, I said, I would buy there as long as they fix their sewage problems.
So maybe on the back, under 10-2, if it says, just like it says in yellow, Councilmember Woods stated that he wants to amend his earlier comment about Dillon Bay condos not being a good place to buy, because we can agree that that was the general statement made, and then you were correcting that you shouldn't buy in Dillon Bay condos. Actually, I'm amending my earlier comment that you shouldn't buy in Dillon Bay condos. I intended that they, you know, and then the rest of it is what's in there. He stated that Dillon Bay condos is a place you do want to live, and that they have the best views in Summit County.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Just to interrupt your train of thought. I don't think we should be guessing at what could have been said, or what was said, or what who heard, or what I heard, or whatever. I, I think it's said and done. And I think what we have is John coming back and saying at the end that he wanted to amend his comment. So whatever that amendment is, by itself speaks to him having said something that he didn't mean, or doesn't think he should have said, or whatever the reason. I think the minutes should probably stay as they are, without having concrete proof of something different. And I, it's very unfortunate that it's a glitch, or whatever. It was muted, or whatever the reason that it's not there. But it's not there, and we shouldn't be making up something that could have been there.
So, thank you. Well, we have your comments here, and we're working off them. So let me offer sort of a light correction that may, because I agree that this feels out of context. This doesn't feel like how it felt in the meeting. He stated that Dillon Bay is the best place you want to live. So what if, a very light amendment, which doesn't put any words in anyone's mouth, Councilmember Woods amended an earlier comment and stated that Dillon Bay condos is a place you want to live. Amended an earlier comment by stating, this is where you want to live. And of course, this will be in this meeting's minutes, like you, to your point, Kyle, that anyone can go back and get the gist of the conversation had about me. Would that be inappropriate? Because that at least presents it to me, this amends an earlier statement rather than being out of the blue, John Woods thinks Dillon Bay is the best place ever.
I was okay with, with everything that I said being recorded. Unfortunately, there was no accurate reproduction of what the original comments, which allows other people to put words in my mouth. So, but obviously, I realized that I didn't really want to say what I said, which is why I went back and changed. Sorry for my insensitivity, but put my foot in my mouth, and I corrected it.
So should we correct to the council member comments and say, you corrected yourself? Your intention with that statement was to amend a previous statement. And I think that would address that you misspoke, and you corrected it, for the record.
Sure.
Can we all agree to that? So it would say, Councilmember Woods amended, and again, because we don't do direct quotes, amended an earlier comment by stating that Dillon Bay condos is a place you do want to live, and they have the best views in Summit County, and he's sure they will get their sewers problems fixed, et cetera. Does that sound like a fair representation of what happened, without putting words in anyone's mouth?
But you're John said, made the comment. John's okay with
Yeah, because those are his comments. I mean, you're amending
Nobody can answer that but John.
You're amending his comments.
Okay. So John, does that?
So read it back one more time.
Council, it's, I'm under Councilmember Condomments 10-2. Councilmember Woods, oh my God, and I've scribbled everything out, amended an earlier comment stating that Dillon Bay condos is a place you want to live. John, Councilmember Woods amended an earlier comment stating that Dillon Bay condos is a place you want to, you do want to live, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What's already Yeah, the rest that's already on there, just putting the first couple of words, saying, Councilmember Woods amended an earlier comment by stating that Dillon Bay condos is a place you do want to live. And then, and then, yeah, and then the rest, as is. Okay. Is, does that, did everyone record that? I said it probably six different ways. But I think the idea was the same every time.
Madam Mayor, I also want to remind you that Councilmember Christensen's on, online as well, if you want to call on him.
We haven't done him on roll call.
Yeah, he was on.
For any of you.
He was on the
Oh, okay.
Well, he might
He's, he's on there now. I just wanted to point that out.
Well, he's been on there. Okay.
Yeah, I must have missed roll call. I've been on the whole time.
He just, he was up there, but he might, maybe he didn't see you, and you didn't. So what do you do about that? Okay. We can hear you. So the next item, so we read on some language here. I think the next item is, is there a motion to amend and approve the minutes, changing item 10-2 to state, Councilmember Woods amended an earlier comment by stating that Dillon Bay condos is a place you do want to live, and they have the best views in Summit County, and he is sure they will get their sewer problems fixed. The COO meeting was October 4th, blah, 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 the same as it is. Is there a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about amending and approving the minutes of October 8th, 2024? Roll call.
Councilmember Tyne?
Yes.
Imamura?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Madam Scivera?
Yes. Thanks for bringing it up. Thanks for keeping us on our toes and making sure we have accurate information in our packets. Up next, we have review of the future council agendas. Anybody have anything? And this is probably going to go away as we adopt these rules, because the way you get something on the agenda will be by email, by two people sending an email, by a request, or by council having a discussion and sort of organically coming up with, Nathan put that up.
One, one update to share, Madam Mayor and Town Council. We are planning on drafting an ordinance on the inclusionary housing provisions, which we would bring back on the, the work session on November 12th. And then also, just a couple of highlights here on the work session, we're going to have a microtransit presentation on some stage. And then, you know, we've been, staff has been getting a lot of questions about the amphitheater and what to do at the amphitheater. So we're going to bring back a season recap, and then talk about programming goals moving forward. I know a lot of town council members have had a lot of interest in this pertaining to various seating options, to different programming models, et cetera. We first want to start with a season recap, and this, this might go into a couple consecutive meetings, to be quite frank, because there's a lot to cover, from census data to data on our survey that went out, and surprisingly, well, it shouldn't be a surprise, we already have thirty, over 3,700 responses. So there's a lot of people that are interested in this topic. And I guess what I'm trying to tell you is that this is probably the first step in a multi-step process in various work sessions.
Great. That sounds great. Want to roll right into your town manager's update?
I'd love to. Outside of the written report, because there isn't any. I was at a conference last week with John Blank, the Mountain Town 2030 Conference, a lot of discussion there about conservation efforts and mitigating tourism. A lot of the entities that were there, and the, this includes entities from around the world, not just mountain towns in, in the West. There were people from as far away in the States as Maryland, and then internationally, Canada, down to New Zealand. A lot of people there are concerned about climate change and the impacts that that's, what that's going to have on our economy, and how do we try to correct that ship? I know John's working on various different grant opportunities to bring different items back forward. We have a lot of work to do here, not only in just the sustainability or conservation aspect, but more in rightsizing tourism, which I think goes back to this whole amphitheater discussion. I know there's discussion there about, you know, the size of the venue, et cetera. Well, other communities in different mountain towns are talking about how do we mitigate the issues of overpopulation and people coming in here and thinking it's Walt Disney World and doing whatever they want to do. So various different thought processes there. So we're going to be bringing those ideas and things forward here as we move into the last two meetings here of 2024. As a reminder, we have one in November, one in December. So this is for sure going to roll into 2025. And outside of that, everything else is going well. Our staff is doing great things. We're trying to work on a budget that's ever-changing. And we're hoping to potentially bring an IGA with the Town of Keystone forward at the next meeting. The next meeting is our budget hearing. That IGA would be for the enforcement. So if we can't figure out this IGA before then, chances are, we, we might not be bringing anything forward.
Right.
So we're trying to burn the midnight oil here and get you something. But I, I know everybody wants results just like this. Some of these things take time, and in government, sometimes you're operating a ship, and it takes a significant amount of force and effort to try to maneuver that ship. So bear with us. We're working as hard as we can. Our, our team has been doing a tremendous job. I can't thank our department heads and our staff. Without them, we couldn't do any of this. So keep that in the back of your minds as we try to plow through a lot of this stuff. That's all I have.
Questions or comments for Nathan? I was just having like, an anxiety attack, thinking about the budget situation coming down to the day of. The, the changes that could be, have, be made.
That, that's to put it nicely.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Cool. Great. Mayor's update, I'll just echo Nathan, since he just said it. Thank you, town staff. Thank you, everyone, for doing what you're doing to put the packets together and do all the work you do every week, and keep everyone on track, and go out of town when you have and keep everyone on track, and go out of town when you have to, and be forced to spend a week in Jackson Hole. It sounds terrible. Let's see, I was at Northwest Cog last week, doing my treasurer duty. Everything's good there. I think it was the best budget that Northwest Cog has ever done in my time that I've been sitting there. So I was, that was great. And I have another Northwest Cog meeting coming up on Thursday, on Thursday. So more to come on that at the next meeting. Otherwise, we will probably have mayor's managers before the next time we meet here, which is the first Thursday of the month. So if you guys have anything you wanted me to bring up to the group at large, please let I was actually thinking something I might, I'd be interested in talking with some of the county commissioners and other mayors about is the inclusionary housing goals that we're talking about, because I think one of the, one of the holdups we had was that we would be the first to do it. Recommendation has sort of a point system. So I was thinking, if there's a way we could all kind of come up with a system that works for everyone, it would be more uniform across the county. And that way, it wouldn't be one town versus another, but sort of something that everyone can agree to. And takes longer to cook, but maybe that way, at least it's across the board.
And Madam Mayor, to that point, we're, we're going to be looking at that from a manager's level to talk about consistent messaging. You know, we, we all talk about recycling and doing the right thing, but everybody has different messaging. So more of a consortium aspect, which is going to evolve into things like that as well.
Yeah. Perfect. Rachel, I like your enthusiasm about working together on those kinds of things, because you're right. I think there is economy and scale, right? The more people doing it, the more volume we get, the more output we get. That's exciting to have a little momentum on that. Councilmember comments?
Nathan and I did go to the I-70 coalition meeting a week or so ago. And let's see, Julie McCloskey was there. And one of the representative from the Colorado State Patrol was asking that we take a better approach to closing I-70 before it becomes a problem, instead of afterwards. So I believe the coalition is looking more at that as a hopefully with an open mind.
Thank you, Kyle. Any other council member comments? Next agenda item is adjournment. Those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. It's 8:32 in this meeting. It's adjourned.
See that?